Sorry.
Okay, six eleven, our delay.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Joshua, you call the roll? Uh, Chris, Joshua, you call the roll? Joshua's our last finding director for like seven years, so.
Ethan Parker.
Here.
Ty Cannon.
Here.
Kenny Sullivan.
Here.
Susan Minette.
Here.
Andrea Beasley.
Here.
And we received a word from both Chad McAvery and Jim Dubovic that they would not be able to attend tonight.
Okay, as I asked, are our town attorneys running late? You have no objection to continuing in their absence? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and swear in the director, and then he'll swear you in.
Uh, excuse the two absent members first, please.
Both members called and said they couldn't be here?
We haven't. I make a motion to excuse the absence of Chad and Jim.
I'll second it.
All of his papers say aye?
Aye.
Pass unanimous. I'll come to you. We can have it on your microphone. Let you hear the paper, repeat after me. You see, I'll swear the truth, the whole truth, and then about the truth we haven't got.
He's with me, but he's probably not gonna say a whole lot.
If he's gonna say anything, he needs to.
He's not gonna say anything.
Does the attorney need to be sworn?
Okay, Greg, if you would, please put the presentation on the screen. Okay. Alright, so here's a staff presentation for tonight's meeting. We've got just the one case, variance request, VAR twenty-four zero zero one. Property address is thirteen ten Emerald Drive. This is a continuation from the May twentieth, twenty twenty-four meeting of this board. So this is a reminder of what was presented back in May. With what was proposed, it was requesting a fourteen-foot front yard setback variance from the minimum thirty. Just a reminder on more evidence presented. Hearsay evidence is not generally allowed. Opinion evidence generally should not be offered only by a properly qualified expert witness. And there must be substantial competent and material evidence to support each official factual determination by this board. So as a reminder, this is the sworn evidence provided by staff at the May twentieth meeting. Just the case history with the initial application. Email correspondence. I think there's a total of seven exhibits. This is photographs as part of email correspondence. Correspondence with the applicant's attorney. To include, she provided some of the background information, original plat and whatnot. And this is extra exhibits, pictures on site. Further on the case history. The variance request application. The code in question. And let's see, and this is confirmation as far as notification for this, so you guys can actually hear this. So we did do the advertisement. We did post the property. We did send letters out to not only adjacent property owners, but also the applicant. So you've got copies of all that. And then sworn evidence provided by the applicant at the May twentieth meeting. And that was these pictures that were provided. As far as what's on the site. Along with, part of it was, I believe, a building permit that was issued. As far as what's added for consideration tonight, you have additional information provided by the applicant. So the, this board tabled a decision on this application and requested the applicant provide a survey. So the applicant has provided this survey, it's on the screen. Should, okay. Also in the packet is a copy of the approved minutes from the May twentieth, twenty twenty-four meeting. That way you guys have reference on whatever Q and A you guys had on this particular application. So with this survey, it's a physical survey. That fourteen-foot variance is now, if it's, was being proposed, it would be a eleven-foot front yard variance of the setbacks versus the fourteen-foot that was initially assumed without a survey. And just a reminder to the board, and this is straight out of our code. Those are your four items that have to be answered on a decision for this application. And then, of course, every decision by this board can be appealed and shall be filed under one sixty D, fourteen oh five D, you know, go before the Superior Court of North Carolina. That's all staff has to present. And I'll go ahead and put up the survey.
Okay, I'm gonna make something. The biggest thing, I appreciate the survey. Tells us everything we, almost everything we need to know. The house is a little bit more than thirty feet off the setback. It's, um, and if I did my math right, you actually have eight point two feet of space to build the deck without a variance.
No, it's only five feet when I measure it.
You can encroach three feet.
You can encroach three feet with uncovered decking and stairways.
Right, right.
So they got.
Yeah, you could have it.
On the short side, you've got eight point two feet without any kind of variance. That's the most significant thing I've discovered with this survey. Anybody have any comments about that or anything else they discovered? You have anything?
No, I agree with you that there's eight foot there for ingress egress deck without a variance.
Yes. So we, you don't need that sixteen-foot originally requested, I think you reduced it to eleven?
It goes from what was presented before, it was estimated at fourteen feet, down to eleven.
Okay. Now, in my opinion, there's not a hardship with only an eight-foot front deck. That's pretty common on houses to be eight foot. Not many have a sixteen-foot front porch. For a variety of reasons, I guess. Now, one question I do have is where could the stairs go? Currently, they go, they went in front of the deck, didn't they?
Yes, sir.
So that would add four feet to what this deck is, it'd be twenty-four feet.
No, sir. No, sir. The, the original deck, when it was built, as listed on the building permit, it's twenty by sixteen, and it was an offset. On the Raleigh Street side, it was sixteen feet out. On the Bobby Wheeler, Robert Wheeler side, it actually went down and extended to the driveway, but three feet of that was taken out. Trying to bring the stairs over the current hood, to have a landing, we were told. So we were gonna relocate the stairs to the left-hand side facing the house to allow for a six-foot drop and then a six-foot drop down and create a landing without encroaching anymore on that setback area.
But that wasn't shown on your site plan?
On what, sir?
That's not shown on your site plan?
That is on this.
Hand drawn up in the exhibit.
That came last first meeting, he had it.
So with that staircase design, you would need ten feet away from the house? Am I reading that correctly? Five, well, no.
Sir, I don't see a measurement as far as where it comes out from the house. I was thinking with the contractor, he said it would be concerning the fall, the number of treads that you needed. And we were uncertain as to the elevation of what that would be at that time.
Okay.
The, the goal is not to exceed with the stairs anything further than what was already there. And the left-hand side is the far side from the street due to the position of the house. So we do have a little bit of extra room on the left-hand side of the driveway side of the deck.
Do you, do you know how, on your first floor level from grade up, do you know what your ceiling height is?
At the house, ma'am, or out by, at the stairs?
At the house.
At the house, I believe it was closer to nine and a half, maybe ten feet. And due to the elevation of the dirt, it goes back up the hill to fifty-eight, it was closer to eight feet out at the staircase side.
Okay, so you might need a few less. Cause I, cause on your, on your sketch, which I know it's just a sketch, you have about eighteen treads there, which is good for like ten feet.
Yes, ma'am.
Roughly. And with ten here, that's about eighty inches that you'd be going out. So you're at twelve feet out from the house? If you were going directly off of this, which you've just said, this is just a sketch, but just trying to get an idea, trying to get some numbers in my head where, where it would fall out.
What the contractor further stated is you could adjust the platform to how large the landing would be coming directly out from the house to compensate for the number of stair treads.
Yes.
I don't, sir, I don't think you're gonna need a landing there. That's really short off of the elevation change there. I think the landing would be more of a want than a need. Your landing only has to happen when you get to a certain height. And I think what Susan was trying to say is an eight, eight-foot, nine-foot grade relief does not require a landing for North Carolina Building Code. And it looks like, based on that hand sketch, that with a five-foot wide stair tread, so your landing has to be a minimum of five foot by five foot to turn per building code. That would be far enough that you would probably encroach into the setback past the three foot, because the house is only, there's not a dimension on here from the house to the right-of-way. So we don't know how far your stairs are proposing to come out.
Well, I think if they need to turn, because it's the driveway.
Yeah, but if they turn, they're more than likely gonna come out more than three foot into the front setback.
If they go straight, they're gonna be even further.
No, if they go straight, they would just come across the driveway.
Yeah, go to the driveway.
They definitely can't come south.
Well, there's not enough room if it goes straight from the edge of the, of the.
If it went straight down.
Yeah, if it went straight here, down that way, he'd be in his driveway.
That's, well, we think he would.
If it went straight.
We think he would, yes.
So he has to curve it. He'd have to turn it.
Yes.
No matter what he's doing.
I have a question, Chris, on this lot here. I don't know who gave us this, or if it come from you or for them. Showing it was a hundred and fifty-foot lot. Where, and also in her letter, saying it was a hundred and fifty feet, now it's a hundred and thirty-seven point seven. Where did the property go? Did the state take the front? When they did the road, I know the road moved at one time, so where's the other twenty feet?
That's, that's the original plat that included this lot. It was provided by the applicant's attorney as part of her information provided to the town staff.
And that was nineteen seventy-one?
In the early seventies, I think. I, I've got it right here.
I think it was built in seventy-three.
The plat is, or some of my later data, but I do wanna say, I noticed that at the time of the block being done, the, it was showing a sixty-foot right-of-way for Emerald Drive. Now there's an eighty-foot right-of-way that, you know, that doesn't have, you know, so they took at least ten feet on that side. So that's, you know, that's, our, our deduction is that at some point, that's why we're not, that, that property was taken, leading to why now the deck is not within that code.
On that, that wasn't even Highway fifty-eight then, was it?
So that is, the, the date on that.
That didn't, but not Highway fifty-eight. That was before the bridge was built. Likely a dirt road.
So just, just for your information, the plat is dated nineteen fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four. And, you know, the assumption is that as DOT needed, they, they acquired via individual or condemnation.
Long before the bridge and long before it was a highway.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that plat was done in fifty-four.
Yeah.
See the, you know, all the changes that occurred in Emerald Isle from fifty-four to fifty-seven, so.
And the house was built in seventy-one? Seventy-three. So I think it would've been Highway fifty-eight by then. So I don't know, I, I have no idea what the setbacks were and.
The house next door, the Wheeler residence, actually has an original concrete monument in the yard that is referencing the thirty-foot right-of-way as it was originally. And the DOT, so I was told after talking with the Eastern Chief Engineer, I believe his title was, that at some point in time, they extended that right-of-way from sixty to eighty feet. And the residents were paid, that was prior to us obtaining the property. So I'm, I'm not sure what date that was on.
Okay.
But there is an original monument next door at the thirty-foot right-of-way from seven.
Before the state took over Emerald Drive?
Before they extended it before seventeen seventy.
Yes. It's your question, Ty?
Yeah.
This is ancient history, some of this stuff.
Sir.
This is ancient history, so to speak. This, this is back to the.
I found out way more through this process than I feel like I needed to know.
This is back in the dark ages of Emerald Isle.
So I have a question. This deck, that is your main entrance into the house, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this house a duplex or anything like that?
It said over/under duplex.
Over/under?
Based on the requirements by Emerald Isle when it was built. Because it did have an internal staircase, they considered it two separate residences. That's why it has two street addresses, thirteen oh eight and thirteen ten Emerald Drive.
So this here is basically for the other, for the lower level, the back?
May I approach and take a look at some of that?
Sure, yeah. So, this, it's the same place? So is that the back?
Yes, ma'am, this is the back. There's a side door to the lower entrance here.
Okay.
And the secondary entrance is a sliding door right there.
And is that upstairs?
There's a deck, that's also the deck, a small deck.
Okay.
And there's a set of stairs that leads from this corner to the back of the house.
Okay.
But the primary entrance is always built there.
Like stairs, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So the, the original deck, was that sixteen feet out and then had stairs?
May I come back up, ma'am?
Sure.
Can you have a picture of that?
I have, I've pulled it up. So this is what was there?
Can you expand that? If you look on this side, this side actually comes out sixteen feet. And it comes across about eleven feet.
Okay.
And three feet of this area right here was taken from this side over to accommodate for the stairs coming down.
So it's, so that side of the deck part is probably, what, three, four, four feet?
It's four feet shorter than that side.
And this is sixteen feet.
So it actually came down, if this is the house, the deck protruded sixteen feet here, went across, and then it came out, I'm gonna say thirteen feet here, it went across. And there was a little look, and then it turned and went downstairs.
Mr. Quick, if I may, Greg has provided a Google Street View that shows it exists, or what the deck was. If you could, just so all board members can see what you're conveying.
The side.
That's the side. Could you show the front, please?
Yeah, okay, I see now.
Probably straight on the front. Yeah. Walk around, walk around there, walk around there.
From the house, at this point, out is sixteen feet. It's approximately.
Walking down there.
I think he's trying to get you a clear.
Here we go.
So on, on the right-hand side facing the house, this comes out sixteen feet. Low portion of the deck protrudes away from the house more than sixteen feet. Three feet is an offset right here to allow for the stairs to go down in the front. With the new configuration that was proposed, the contractor said they thought it would be more ergonomic to come down to the side and offer a landing, which I, I thought it was code, forgive me, I am by a general contractor. But that would allow us to not have one continuous run stairs, because they, they take a big, you know, stair treads, trying to get sixteen, eighteen-foot long boards without them splitting and being subject to the weather, that would allow for shorter run. And it would basically just push the stairs out, coming down right over top of this window on the house and beside the driveway. So it would not be any further out from the house whatsoever. Or at least we had never looked around.
So if I may ask, technically, you're asking for a larger deck square footage by doing sixteen by twenty and then adding stairs outside of that footprint. So really, you're enlarging your usable deck space inside the right-of-way. Which we definitely cannot agree, we cannot grant a variance for that. So your, your steps are inside of your deck footprint, you just said that. So definitely.
Partly.
About half.
They encroach into the footprint, so if he, he's asking, he's telling us that the footprint is going back the exact same. That's what we have in our application.
Correct.
It's not. It's not.
Correct.
They're adding square footage to a flat surface that's a usable deck.
I believe I also stated I would be glad to put it back if allowed exactly like it was.
Okay, what, what I'm personally leaning toward, I'll share this with everybody, is that it can, your eight-foot deck is absolutely no problem. Even without a variance. The stairs, for me, that would need a variance. But we don't know how far out they would come. Would you be satisfied with an eight-foot deck?
No, sir. I would really like to put back exactly what is on pile of fire, that was originally on the house.
A lot, a lot's changed in the rules since nineteen seventy-three. So that's, that's not our doing, and.
No, sir, it's not. That's what I pay taxes on, that's what's referenced, that's what I request the, the putback.
Yes.
If we can.
I don't view it as a hardship only having an eight-foot deck. That's what most people have anyway.
Uh, that's not true.
Most.
That's not true.
From the front of the house.
Unless you're oceanfront, or if you're soundfront, you have room, you could.
No, you can see the ocean from that deck.
Yes.
That was the purpose of it. We're a third row, so you actually can see the ocean descending on that deck.
I know it's preferred, but.
There, there are a lot of houses with front porches that are bigger than eight feet.
Does that rise to the level of a hardship?
I don't know, if, if we voted earlier, you know, not to have the, the change in setbacks for the fire department, because we didn't wanna take land away from people, when everybody was here fighting for that, and we said, that's right, that's your investment, I think it's, how are we gonna turn this one? So we're gonna give those people, I, I just don't think that's fair. I think we need to be the same. And if we're gonna say, oh, you bought this land and we're taking it away from you, and, and this is the same thing.
But we didn't, we did not change the setback.
I know.
We did not take the land from the state.
But we recommended.
We, no, we talked about the ten and the five.
Right, but that was a, this is a site-specific case, it's not a general case for, and allowing a variance requires a hardship.
Yeah, it's not what we.
So I, there, personally, I think there is a hardship because he's not allowed to have what he bought.
I agree.
Things change.
Maybe you're taking his money away.
No, we're not.
You're taking, yeah, you are.
A fifty-one-year-old dick, deck fell down. That's, we didn't do that. Things age out and have to be replaced.
And that's what he was trying to do, is replace what, repair what he had.
I couldn't put lead and gasoline in my seventy-eight truck. Cause they outlawed it, you know. If it wasn't a hardship.
Kenny, I agree, I don't think this rises to the level of a hardship, because there is ample access, there is ample ability to have an eight-foot deck off the front of, front of the property.
Eight-foot, definitely.
The wall is definitely to go back with what was there, but a hardship would mean something where you couldn't access the property. There's access in the rear of the property, so that this front technically wouldn't have to have stairs to be able to have the property as usable living space.
So if you bought a house and you have views of the water from one direction, that's why you bought the house, and you go to repair your porch, and your porch falls down, and you find out you're over the setback, and now you can't put your porch back up so that you can sit out there and really enjoy the water, which is why you bought the property. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am, I'll explain why. If you let your second-story deck fall down above your boat lift in North Carolina, a camel will not let you put that back, no matter what. It's against the rules, it's against the ordinance. You can repair it so that it stays up in perpetuity. They, they will not make you take it down. But if you let it fall down, you cannot put it back, no matter how long it was standing, no matter anything. It, it's not a matter of want or if, you know, we want to give it to them. Heck, I'd let, I have no problem with a deck in the front setback. I don't think it encumbers anything. I think there's plenty of sight distance from Raleigh Street. I don't think it encumbers anybody's ability to be safe. I don't think that he is rising to the level of a hardship by the definition that I've read through the UNC School of Business, I think, or, or School of Government, sorry.
So I'm gonna read verbatim what's in our code. And this is section two point four point seventeen subsection three. Says, and, and I'm not, again, this is verbatim. A variance from any of the terms of this ordinance shall be granted by concurring vote of four fifths of the present board members, or present members of the Board of Adjustment upon showing of all the following. This goes into hardships. A necessary hardship would result from the strict application of regulations. It's not necessary to demonstrate that in absence of the variance, no reasonable use can be made of the property. The second one is a hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, such as size, location, topography. Hardships resulting from the personal circumstances, as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common to the neighborhood or general public may not be the basis of granting a variance. A variance may be granted when necessary and appropriate, when necessary and appropriate to make a reasonable accommodation under Federal Fair Housing Act for a person with disability. The, the third one. The, the third one is "The hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or, or the property owner. The act of purchasing property with knowledge that circumstances exist that may justify the granting of variance is not a self-created hardship." And the final, number four, is "The request, requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulation, such, such that public safety is secure and substantial justice is achieved." So those are straight out of our code instructing the board how you make a decision on this.
Could you leave that up there a little bit longer, Greg?
Up that, exhibit six, exhibit six, page two, it's written right there. I'll read that out when we vote. But if you want to read some more of it, you've got it in your pack.
Yeah.
We'll leave it up there. One thing that strikes that is important to me is that the hardships resulting from personal circumstances, as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common to the neighborhood or the general public, may not be the basis for granting a variance. As you were telling me that, but he bought it this way, that's common throughout the town. That's what we're gonna use, and there's no reason to even tell people they can't encroach the right-of-way.
But you could also read that in another direction in that... Sorry.
Well, a lot has changed from when the town was incorporated in nineteen fifty-six to today. We've got hundreds of non-conforming properties, and it's, it's time to correct those. As they age out, the new ones come in, they're, it's corrected. But allowing the conditions to exist with replacement is not... I don't think that's the proper way to approach it. He, he would have a hardship if he couldn't put stairs to the front door.
Right.
Couldn't use the front door. That would be a hardship, no doubt.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
An eight-foot deck versus a sixteen-foot deck doesn't rise to that level, in my opinion.
Right.
That's my opinion. Now, the stairs are gonna be tricky. I, I think we need to figure out how far those stairs are gonna come out the way they're drawn here with landing in the middle and create a variance for the stairs, but not the deck.
Again, Mr. Chair, I'd be glad to put the deck back if allowed exactly in the same footprint that it was. That's not an issue. I, I can do that.
I, I understand that, but that... Not being able to do that, I don't view that as a hardship because there's a...
It's a loss of money to me. It's a devaluation of my property. I'm, I'm not casting stones at the property right next door.
Having a brand-new functional deck.
I'm sorry, the property right next door, sir, just simply went through a complete rebuild process.
I've read that, I've read that, and I don't know...
His property, his property is seven point two feet from my property line. No variance was asked for, no variance was required.
I don't know how that got done.
I don't either, sir.
Did he get a building permit?
Yes, sir. The contractor's last name was Parker. I can't remember his first name, but it was for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which exceeds fifty percent of the property value. I, I had a survey right here on my phone, and I'd be glad to show you that, that business is seven point two feet.
I've seen it. I've been by the property. I see the house next door to you that's, you know. I don't know how it got there. I don't know...
Well, the, the remodel was just recently completed, and no variance was required for that property.
Chris, do we have any idea who, if that was, that was before you were here, right?
That's correct.
So you, you don't know if that was permitted or inspected or any, anything?
Sir, it was permitted.
Well, they, somehow, they shouldn't have, because they got away with something?
No, sir. I'm not saying because they got away with it.
Well, they did.
What I'm saying is they put back and built in the same location, and that's all that I'm asking for here tonight. It's to put back what was there originally, just as it was listed with the Carteret County Register of Rights.
Had he come before this board, he likely would have been denied. It had, under the same circumstances, he wouldn't have...
He's our contractor, that's the only difference between me and him.
Doesn't mean the contractor got a permit. You said he did.
He got a permit. It's public information. I, I pulled the permit.
But it was, okay. We could look into that, but that's still, just because he did it wrong, doesn't make it, everybody can do it wrong now.
No, sir, I'm not saying two wrongs make a right. Please understand that. I'm just saying that property was allowed to proceed forward.
Not by, not by anybody in this room?
Sir, I don't know who allowed it.
I don't either. It shouldn't have been.
I'll tell you what happened.
Because somebody did something wrong in the past, does not grant other people that same option.
And I, and he, we both totally agree with that. Like he says, two wrongs don't make a right. But how, how you can see how it does give the appearance that he's being treated unfairly from the rest of, from other people in, in Ramallah. And as far as hardship, then I could not find a definition for hardship within, within the ordinances. So, but somewhat, I think, if up, up into your interpretation, here, I, I agree that, you know, devaluing, uh, taking away his property creates a hardship for him, you know, there's the...
I, I don't think this is gonna devalue the home.
I do.
At a fifty-one-year-old deck versus a brand-new deck. Now, the bigger the deck you build, maybe the more value you'll add to your home. But putting in a brand-new eight-foot deck, replacing a fifty-one-year-old sixteen-foot deck, I don't think he values it a dime.
But if you look at it, if you look at it a different direction, though, repairing the deck, which is what he started out to do, was to repair the deck. And I also kinda wonder if Cama would look at that differently if he were repairing a dock.
No, and it fell, I was told specifically. No, if it falls, it falls, it's over.
And this, and this is also not Cama, but this is, in my opinion, this is, if he, I think he should be allowed to build back what was there before. That way, he doesn't have the extra square footage. He's got exactly what he had before. That puts him equal to what he had before, repaired, replaced, and it's not a hardship. If you make him build back smaller, an eight-foot deck is going to devalue his property if he were to sell it because he has water views, and you can't get much on an eight-foot deck.
I don't think financing has anything to do with creating a hardship, does it?
I'm not talking about financing.
But that's the whole reason for your argument, is that the property is getting devalued, but in the definition of a, of a variance.
She can't find a definition.
He just put it up there, Susan. Yes, it, by this...
That just said it was a hardship.
We should have our attorney here. Chris, we should have our attorney here. We should have our attorney here.
It's up to the board. The, what was, the four items read to you tonight is straight from the code, and it's what has to be answered when you guys consider an action on a variance request.
So... My, my, I'll share with you, we were talking about definitions of hardship or definitions. The legal definition for repair, which is what I tried to do, was the restoration of a damaged, broken, or failed device to return it to its original intent. Mr. Parker, following up on the previous statement, he said that I was required to have a building permit. I reached out to Carteret County again because I, I called them originally. I was told I didn't have to have a building permit. You were correct. It should have been a permit, but they offered what they call a repair permit for making simple repairs such as the pole. So it should have been a permit pulled, but repair versus building.
It's still issued by the Building Inspection Department. It's still a building. Any, any action in the state of North Carolina that requires structural integrity has to have a building permit. That is straight out of general statute.
Carteret County said I need a repair permit.
That's still a building permit. Okay, I think, I'll make a motion to deny the applicant for reasons for the encroachment fourteen feet into the front setback due to, it's not...
Just, just looked up legal hardship. There's no set legal definition, but most courts recognize a hardship as having one or all of the following factors: a long-term negative financial impact on the party, deprivation, suffering, or adversity for more than one party. I do think this is a long-term negative financial impact.
Is that a statement while you're reading?
It's, it's Google, man.
We can't Google.
I know, I know. I'm just saying, I know.
We have to go by, we can't go to Google and get, and a definition. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I agree.
But there is an interpretation that we're having to deal with.
Yes, and you guys are interpreting that the sixteen-foot or twenty-foot deck is okay, and we're saying that an eight-foot deck, it serves the exact same purpose.
It doesn't.
And there's no hardship.
The, the eight-foot deck does not...
Okay, I think we're at the impasse then. Somebody needs to make a motion.
Well, and I also would like to say, though, that where I'm talking about interpretation is the part in the UDO where it says, replacing the house, you can replace, you can rebuild the house if it's under fifty percent of the value. And we were talking about, I'm not saying it exactly right, but we were talking about that originally on the case. Fifty percent of the, and in my opinion, and this is where interpretation comes in, that deck was designed to be the front entry of the house. It's kinda like saying you, because your house was built forty years ago in the setback, you could, if your front porch that was covered is your entrance to your house, we would allow that, but we won't allow a deck. And it was designed to be the front entry. It was designed that way on the house, and that's where the interpretation part comes in.
One hundred percent of the non-conforming structure was destroyed. Not damaged. Hundred percent of the non-conforming structure.
That depends, see, that's the definition. Because in my opinion, my experience, the deck was attached to the house. It is part of the house. If it was a freestanding deck, then it's a non-conforming structure that's separate from the house. But this was attached to the house, so it's part of the house.
So you have to look in that, I agree with you, that's my interpretation. Well, you have to look at the deck as part of the house. There, it's integral to the house, so that that's not, the debt going is a fifty percent of the integrated whole of the house and the deck.
And I'm gonna have to point this out because that is not what sworn staff to enforce a code interpreted. We interpreted it, once that deck disintegrated, fell, whichever was dismantled, it was a non-conforming deck, it would have to be built to our code, and that's why we are here, not only back from May, but also tonight to review their request. So, the staff's, staff's interpretation was, once that deck fell, or whatever it did, it could only be built to current code. And that was verified by legal staff representing the town at that time that that is a correct interpretation.
But if you, if you look at the reasoning, that's likely behind that sort of grand following in that's smart. It's because there were, there are structures that at one point were conforming, and then because of changes in law, no longer were. And so it's saying, okay, we'll allow some grace here because we understand that it, that's a hardship. That that's, you know, if we, if we changed the law on you and you used to be a performance and now you're not, that something happened and you wanna go back to just what you were, you're not trying to get outside of that. We understand that it would be unfair to not allow you to do that. That's the reasoning behind that. Okay, so maybe we don't crawl under the staff's interpretation of that specific part of the ordinance, but when you go to where we are in the ordinance and you're looking at what is a hardship, you can think about that when you're, as a, as a guide to your interpretation of what's gonna be a hardship because there is not in the ordinance a definition, you know, quotation marks. A hardship is like, this gives you some examples of maybe what's not, or, you know, or that you don't, it gives you some guides in doing it, but it does not give you a specific definition.
I agree with a lot of what you're saying. Our decision cannot be based on emotion. We're, we're... I don't think there's a person over here, back here, that said, that wants you not to build a deck. We'd love it if you could build your deck, but that's not what we rule on. We rule on the law, the facts, not emotion. I think it'd be great if you could build a deck, but...
The problem with that statement is you're saying we're doing it on the law, and it's the town's interpretation of that that's saying he can't build it back, and that's not a law.
He can build it back so long as it's within modern...
But that's, but that's the town's interpretation. That's not a law.
It is a law, isn't it? Approved by the state, all are, all are.
Well, our code says it. Staff interpreted it that way, clarified it with legal staff represent, or legal staff representing the town. It is not one hundred percent clear. I think that's what Board Member Minette is, is trying to convey. It's not a hundred percent clear. It's based off interpretation. And that's why staff clarified it with legal staff on that. So we are standing behind the decision that was made. Because the decision was made, it was thoughtful on, on the approach to it, making sure we covered all bases, and that it was following our code.
And hardship is kind of a subjective term. You know, what's a hardship to me is not a hardship to somebody else, so it, it could be different to everybody. But I view a hardship, he can't use the front door. If he couldn't build a deck there at all, no stairs, that's a hardship.
Oh, yeah.
Only having an eight-foot deck, maybe annoying, but it doesn't, or emotionally poor, but that doesn't make it a hardship.
Mr. Chair, it, it's not an emotional decision that I'm asking for. It, it, it is a hardship, just simply for, for a small example. If you have a, a picnic table that's six feet long, or, or a, ours is polywood, by the way. It has chairs that sit at the end. It, there's no way that you could physically use that table, which has already been purchased, for the existing deck that was there on an eight-foot deck. I really appreciate, you know, your willingness to work with me on that. And, and if, if we could make a counter offer, or we could come to a different opinion somewhere on there. No, I, I don't have to have a sixteen-foot deck. That's what was originally on the house. That's what's registered with, with Carteret County. That's what I've been paying taxes on. That's what I'd like to put back. I've offered to put it back in the original footprint. As Mr. Parker said, I was asking for more area. It's roughly two hundred and three feet that would be encroaching on the setback. I, I'm not asking to make it any larger. I, I didn't even consider that possibility until he brought it up. I can make a smaller deck. I'd ask for more than eight feet, if possible, but I would originally like to put back what's there. If you're open for, for another option, of course, I don't have any plans, I don't have any drawings. Say you said, hey, build a fourteen-foot deck, would that be acceptable? We'll, we'll keep bringing it back in till we can get to some type of working solution that would benefit all parties. You know, I'm just a feeble-minded government employee, but I thought the idea of this variance forward was to be able to rule and interpret the UDO and then... UDO and then decisions whether it goes along with, or it goes against the code, to allow for such illustrations of good faith and humanity.
Well, I will say, as, so I design homes for a living, and you really can't, you could not put picnic table on an eight-foot deck and use it. I mean, technically, you could, but you'd be like, somebody'd have to get up so the other person could get in, and then you'd just squeeze around. So it would have to be a minimum of 10 feet to use it similar to how he was using it before, and that would still be on the tighter end. So if we do not allow him to do a 16, I think we should go to a 10 or 12, we should allow that, so that he at least has some of the usable space that he had before. An eight-foot is a, you're gonna sit there and watch the sunset, but you're not gonna congregate with people on it.
The deck was a gathering location. When people come over, when the kids come up, you know, everybody's sitting on the deck in the afternoons. Sunsets are amazing. You can drink water, which that's why I'm off the house for, that's why my parents off the house for, and that's what we've always done. I realize things change, laws change, rules change. Just, if we can do something to accommodate being able to use that deck in a similar capacity, I'm not against that. Eight foot, in my opinion, doesn't allow for that. As she stated, we've got a polywood table and two rocking chairs. If there's no way that you could egress off of that, with an eight-foot deck. You guys have stated before, I believe, that you would give three feet. I have six, where a nine. Can we make a counter offer? Can we do something?
The ordinance allows for three foot of encroachment. That's not from us. It already allows.
Well, if it allows for three foot, I've got six, so if it allows for three, that's nine feet.
Close, yes. My calculations are 8.2 feet, but.
It depends on which side of the deck you measure on, sir.
That's on the short side.
Okay, if you measure on my side, it's nine. But either tomato, tomato, we split the difference in the middle. Your average distance, center of the deck is 10 foot one. But that's, if it pleases the board, I would ask that if you're not going to allow a 16-foot deck, would you be open to make a counter offer to do something different, to make this a destination as soon as you would want it possible?
It's not an offer counter offer, I think. It's a fact-finding mission. It's not a, you know, I'll do this if you'll do that. That's not how we come to our decisions. It's finding a fact. And we're.
I think we're trying to work with them, though.
Yes. I had mentioned earlier that stairs, I think, will need a variance, the way he has them drawn, because I don't think they will fit within what the eight-foot or almost nine-foot you have on that side would work.
Can I have a quick question?
Yeah.
Question for you, sir. What would prevent you from making the rear deck larger so that you could put the picnic table out back and have the sound views? I know you mentioned the sunset views. What would, what would prevent you from making the rear deck larger?
The empty level to the bottom unit of the house, as well as the driveway, a parking area that goes behind there. You would no longer be able to, for the downstairs unit to use that area for parking. That's compacted ABC, and that's parking for that unit.
Okay, it just wasn't shown on the survey here as being a parking area?
No, sir. If you look at the original, the, I would say, from Carteret County, it does show that area. I think it's 12 foot, maybe. I don't recall exactly now, far it comes out. It's not very far.
I want to highlight one thing that Mr. Quick just said, that, you know, the purpose of this court adjustment is to look at whether strict interpretation of the ordinance would create a hardship. And I think, Mr. Melo, Mr. Solomon, that you're, you said, well, we can't base it on emotion, but what we're trying to base it on is what is a hardship. And clearly reasonable minds see this as a hardship. And that may not be your definition, but we just ask that you be open to, to the idea that maybe what you're thinking of as a hardship is not what is necessarily the definition of a hardship. Like, you know, we have similar definitions of what a hardship is. You know, that part of it is, that's where your interpretation comes into it. Not emotion, just what can you see as a hardship? And just, we ask that you have an open mind about that part of it.
Like I said, it's inconvenient. It's unpleasant that your deck might be small. But you'll be able to use the front deck, you'll be able to use the front door, stairs to it, so it doesn't violate the level of hardship, in my opinion. I mean, hardship, you know, someone might say, I would build a 30 by 30 out back, so I can do more on my deck. Otherwise, it's a hardship. That's, everybody may view a hardship different. I don't view that as a hardship. And we're at impasse in what we call a hardship. We're not going to convince each other. They're not going to convince me that it's a hardship that it can't go to the original footprint. It's been 51 years or something like that since it was built. My own house was built in the 80s, long before I moved there. Builder built it on the property line instead of on the building setback line. Didn't even set it back to 10 feet required. Built it right on the property line. He had to buy 10 foot of the property next door to be able to finish the house, you know. And then they weren't able to put a deck on that bedroom. Yeah. You know, it was a, made a mistake himself. My garage, on the other side, encroached the setback by two feet. When a tree fell on it, and I think Hurricane Floyd, it crushed the garage. I can't build it back. It's annoying. But the house, everything worked, chugging along just fine.
Is the garage attached to your house?
No, freestanding.
So that's an accessory building, and this is, this is attached to the house, so it's not accessory?
But I'm saying, is it a hardship not having a garage, or annoying?
But that's a different situation.
Hardship, I don't.
It's a different situation, because it's not the house.
Okay, every situation is different. And just because he had it before, if that, if that's our level of allowing a variance, then there's no use this court being here.
I think what Susan, and what they're trying to convey, part of it, is he was trying to repair it. And whatever mistake was made, how the deck fell off. So if the deck was still attached, would there have been an issue?
If he was just maintaining the deck?
If it would have been failed, but still attached.
If he had to take the floorboards up and replace some joists.
Yeah, it would be permissible by maintenance.
Or if one of the support posts was rotten, and he had to replace it.
That's a 50% damage. It's a.
I agree, it wasn't done correctly, because the deck fell off. But if the deck was still attached, and he was trying to fix the post, would you say that's a hardship? He can fix it? During town's interpretation, the deck fell off, and now it's non-conforming deck. If the deck was still attached and leaning there, would we be having this conversation?
I think so.
So let me, let me clarify that. Town's interpretation is, it was a non-conforming deck, because the deck encroached into.
Before.
Setback. So when that non-conforming structure fails, tears down, either by the applicant or by, you know, it just, it got to be built back per code that's currently in the books. So just to clarify, it was not after it fell that it was considered non-conforming. It was non-conforming, and whatever happened, happened, where the deck was there and it was not there anymore. But the replacement, per code, per staff interpretation, verified by legal staff, it would have to be built to the setback requirements that we currently have on our regulations.
So let me ask you a question.
Yes.
That's gonna clarify some stuff in my mind. If you have a house, has a front porch on it, it's a covered porch, and it's a covered porch, the roof of the porch follows along the lines of the rest of the house, and it may be a basic gable, you know. If a corner of that porch is over the setback line, and they need, and.
Which makes it a non-conforming?
Yes. And a tree falls on it, or they go to repair it, and the deck part falls down. Do they have, according to the town, do they have to rebuild without, within the setback, have to push the house in?
They wouldn't have to push the house. They would just have to arrange that roof to comply with the setbacks.
So they'd have to redesign the roof of the house?
If it were to, if the tree falls on it, tears it off, yes.
Okay, so that right there tells me that the interpretation of the town has changed? Because I got approval on a house with Michelle that had exactly that situation. So the town's interpretation, again, cannot be considered a law, because it changes.
That was an individual that worked for the town at the time, that didn't go.
It was Michelle, it's her, but was in his position.
So again, like I said before, staff's interpretation, and just for clarification, staff did inquire with legal staff for the town at the time, to make sure that staff was interpreting it correctly, and they did confirm that.
Well, and that's, and I understand, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not saying that the town necessarily is wrong now, or was wrong then. I'm just saying that the interpretation can change, so it can't be considered a law, which is where you were talking about it. It was a law. I mean, a law can't change without going through legal.
We don't make the laws. We give variances to the laws.
But you were saying it was a law, and we couldn't do it. But it's not a law. That's what I'm saying.
It's a law, isn't it?
So what she's conveying is, there is law in there that is not clearly laid out to where staff interprets, interprets that code on behalf of the town. We're sworn in for that purpose.
It's kind of like the difference between shall and may. It doesn't say shall, it says may.
Yeah, but what she's saying is, it's not, it doesn't say Jane runs. It says Jane might run, or something like that. It says staff has to interpret it for the intent of the code. And if there's ever a question, we rely on legal staff representing the town, both sworn in to service the town, to interpret that law as far as for our enforcement purposes. That's what she's conveying. It's not a, it doesn't clearly state XYZ. It is, she is correct on the fact that it is staff interpretation that has been verified by legal staff.
Yeah, almost all laws are subject to interpretation. Am I correct?
I'm sorry, closer.
I'm asking your lawyer. Laws are subject to interpretation.
When you get down to where people are disagreeing on what they, what they need.
I mean, it's hard to write a law that covers every particular case, and every eventuality, and every issue that may come up. It's a general.
This is why we're here.
Get what?
That's why we're here.
Right. If we're part of that, we get together and interpret what we think the law is, and should that law be excused.
And right now, the question is, what is considered a hardship? And I think the financial impact of taking that deck down to eight feet is a hardship.
Yep.
That's, that's my interpretation.
I don't. Now, we had a motion on the floor, so let's clear that before we move on to the closure motion. Or did you not complete it?
We can clear that.
Huh?
We can move on, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do either of you want to make a motion, based on your interpretation of this case?
Well, I don't know if I'm ready to make this a motion just yet, but I would say, it kind of sounds to me, I don't know for sure, but my personal opinion, he should be able to build back what he had before, which would not be moving the steps, as you, we'd already talked about. I feel like the board isn't necessarily going in that direction. Would you think it was reasonable to tell him he could do a 12-foot deck, so that he can still have dinner out there with his friends and family, and see the ocean views that he bought the property for? He's still getting less than what he had. I have a real hard time with the town taking away something I paid for, legally paid for, and that's pretty much what you're trying to do. And that's where my whole issue comes in.
The town did not take it away.
The town did, with the.
Take it away is.
It's town property. It's inside the town.
It's property. There are setbacks that have changed, and the town didn't even, even the town didn't do that.
Well, the road did.
But it's in the town. It is in the town.
Yes.
And whether it's the town, or the state, or whoever, they're taking away his property that he paid for. I have an issue with that. So if, in my personal opinion, we shall all say, he can build back exactly what he had.
I wouldn't go with that.
And that's, so that's what I'm saying. Would you all think it would be worthwhile to let him do a 12-foot deck?
That's not, that's any midpoint on it.
I'm putting it on the table.
If he applied and originally said that, I would have been looking at this case completely different from the beginning.
But didn't we do that on another board of, Board of Adjustments thing, where they wanted a certain setback, to change a setback to a certain amount, and we said, well, you could, what, how about if you did this instead?
Yes, we as a board determined.
So that's what I'm doing right now.
But I don't want to stand here as a board and say, yeah, we'll give him 12, and we're done. If that's what he wants, he can request that. That's not what he's requesting. I know you can change your request.
No, but you, I, no, we, as the Board of Adjustments, on that property that had the well, the guy wanted, I don't remember, 12-foot setback instead of 15. And we said, how about 14? That's what I'm suggesting we do right now.
Every case has its own peculiarities, and each case is different individually, one by one by one. Next week, his neighbor could come by and ask for a different variance, and it might be granted because of the topography of his land, or.
Okay, so you're saying you don't want to put on the table a 12-foot deck instead of a 16?
I don't want to make him an offer of what, if that's what he asked for, then we can hear it.
Sir, I told you I would be willing to ask for less, if the board would entertain that.
What I don't, what I suggested earlier was.
Sir, you yourself said at the May 20th meeting, that you would agree to X number feet deck, and then you countered behind that and offered a larger. I believe you threw out 10 or 11. I don't have the minutes to provide on it, but you did mention some numbers, but you were not in agreement.
Let me clarify, when he was talking that, he was, we were wanting the survey, so you may have only been needing four feet. You weren't throwing, he was throwing out numbers that you may only need this much. It wasn't that he suggested that. It was just, we wanted the survey, so we understood exactly what you needed.
From the survey, we need.
Because again, we gotta do facts, and we can't just go by.
We include one inch average. It's what we found out after the survey. I would be willing to adjust the deck size. I don't have drawings. But if it pleases the board, I would accept a 12-foot, and you tell me where you want the stairs. I would like to be able to put a picnic table and two rocking chairs that I've already purchased. I bet it matters, $1,500 of polywood. I might better put back on that structure and have it safe.
Like I said, I fully understand that, and I feel bad for you. But that doesn't fit, in my view, what we're legally required to do. It feels like to be the right thing to do. It's not necessarily.
But we did that, is what I'm telling you.
That was a completely different circumstance. It was.
They came to us asking for, and I can't remember exactly, a 10-foot setback. We went back to them and said, how about 14? We went back to them and said, how about 14? And they said, okay. That's what I'm saying right now. He's asking for 16, I'm saying, how about 12?
He's asking for 10, but 10.6.
Well, he's asking for 16, he was asking for a 16-foot deck, and I'm saying, how about a 12-foot deck?
They did not request a 16, if that's what was originally there, and that's what was registered as a registered deed. I stated earlier, I'd be willing to adjust the size if it pleased the board. I realize anything that you offer is encroaching, or whatever term you want to use on your setback. So I don't know what you guys, apparently, we're not in agreement that four out of the five of you would want to offer the 16 with the stairs in any configuration. I will adjust it. I don't have a drawing reflecting that, but I'll by all means to get one if you're willing to entertain that.
Can we do a vote to see exactly how everybody feels about the 16? And then, and then if, if we don't agree, which I feel like is probably going to happen, can we still talk about possibly doing a vote?
You guys can discuss whatever...
I don't think we need a vote for it. I think, I'm not going with 16. I just, there's evidence in there, the facts aren't there.
Let's say with 12, Ty.
I feel like it's a hardship, just because it was what was ever for. I'm torn.
Yeah, I'm with you.
So you're, so you kind of go for the 16, but you're not 100% is what you're saying? Okay, so you're on the fence, basically?
And we're not trying, we're trying to rationalize this out, because whatever decision we make here affects the future with other properties. And we just can't give on our opinions, we just can't do it. My opinion, and we're all in agreement, we want to give it to you. But we got to find something in there to interpret that, yes, you should have this, and this is why. And we just got to cover ourselves with that.
And again, all I'm asking for is consistency.
Right. But that's it. Once we do, once we set a precedent with this one, then we do it again, so that's the problem.
You have to pay doors, Bob. And you have to be very careful how you apply that. I completely understand that.
And that was the reason last time we asked for the survey, because it helps us.
So we knew exactly what we were asking for, and we found out that it's 10-foot versus 14 feet, or whatever the numbers may be. It's less than originally thought.
My opinion, I feel like it is a hardship, because it does devalue a home sum. I don't think it devalues your home value. You can still have a deck there, but it's not the same usable space as you had before when you purchased a home. And you were trying to repair it, and it fell off. Now, whether that was done correctly, or on purpose, or accidental where it fell off, I can't say. And I can't, it's hearsay, otherwise, if it, whatever reason. And I want to believe that, but I can't, you know. And I feel like it's a hardship myself.
So you'd go with reducing it to 12 or something?
I would go with...
Go back same footprint?
Same footprint, same exact footprint.
Well, you got three, it looks like. I'm out of... Ethan, do you want to give your opinion?
No, I've said my piece. No, definitely, I'm not voting for 16-foot.
What do you think of 12?
No. So that wouldn't work.
My concern is, if we go with 12, the way they proposed the stairs, they're definitely going to encroach into the front setback by more than three feet.
What if the stairs were the same, is the same footprint, or the same size or shape it is now, just back to 12 feet? Would that still...
Then he's not going to have any usable space. He's going to be less than eight foot with most of the deck.
I'll go back to my idea. That we give them a variance to encroach with the steps only. We just got to figure out what that measurement might be. We can give them a little extra, because it might, might need three feet, might need five feet to build proper steps.
So what's the difference between you suggesting giving them a variance only on the steps versus a variance at 12 feet instead of 16?
Because the steps are going to take up five feet into the runway instead of 12.
Stairs don't want to be five foot wide if you check the footprint of the deck.
They can be four foot.
Yeah.
But three foot, three foot is what they are now.
I wouldn't build such three-foot stairs personally, but...
Well, sir, that's, again, that's your opinion. It has three foot wide steps now. So to be able to utilize a picnic table and some rocking chairs, I can accommodate stairs. If there's a larger side, we could adjust it. I'll turn them and put them underneath the deck if I have to. I mean, I'm asking...
I have a question for you. Were the rocking chairs and the table bought before you started working on the deck?
Yes, sir.
So they would fit on the existing deck with the stairs recessed into it?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't say.
I don't.
You don't think so?
I don't.
The table was on the long side, Mr. Parker? And if you went back to the picture, the table ran parallel on the long side of the deck. And that offset was enough to allow you to...
It looks like you can see it in the picture.
Can you see this? I can show you on my iPad.
Yes, I'm going back to the other photos.
Okay. It looks like the rocking chairs on that, the short side.
The rocking chairs on the short side, and...
There was two rocking chairs and a lounger on the short side.
So as a reminder, and I think Mr. Quick mentioned this also. If there's, if this board is going to consider any variance, it's got to be a four, fifth, concurrent vote. If it's 3-2, the motion fails.
I think we've gotten almost nowhere in the last hour.
I don't, I don't understand what the difference is between proposing an eight-foot deck and doing a variance on the steps versus us proposing doing a 12-foot deck.
Because you're looking at a much longer footprint encroaching.
It's still, it's still...
25 feet instead of just five feet for the width of stairs.
It's still an encroachment.
I think I would be okay with having the deck supports inside the three-foot allowable encroachment and cantilevering one extra foot on top of that. So that would be a four-foot encroachment, which would give them, what, six foot plus? So we'd have, what, 11 feet, I think, plus or minus?
Can you say that again about the support?
If you had the deck support, the piling, or brick foundation, however he's going to do the support, add the three foot, where by code, we allow for a three-foot encroachment. And then he can cantilever his floor joists over an additional 12, maybe 18 inches at the most. And that would probably give him 10-foot, 10-foot six, 10-foot eight.
Well, when I...
I haven't done the math.
When I, when I measured this, because I printed this out at scale, and I'm using, you know, survey scale on it, it looked like the short side of the deck here was five feet from the property line. So it would be eight feet. And then if you did a two-foot cantilever on the deck, he could have a 10-foot deck.
Greg, can you put that survey up on the screen, please?
Yeah, because it's 16-foot proposed with a 10.8-foot encroachment.
So you're kind of proposing a 10-foot deck with a setback.
Let me point this out for everybody. All right. Again, you printed out on 17 by 17. This may not, this may be drafted out for the bigger version.
I did that.
What I'm going on is what the survey, which is Jeremy McCombs pointed out. All right, you've got this proposed deck of 16 by 20. He's included the setback lines per code. So in that 16, this furthest one, they have this measurement shown by arrows to where that portion is 10.8.
Which is basically 11.
That's why, that's why when staff put together, it went from a request from 14-foot variance to 11 on that if it's this proposed footprint. And then on this side, it's a 9.6 encroachment. Again, if it's a 16 by 20 deck replacement.
Ethan, what are you talking about?
Right, so if you take the 16, so if you take the 10.8 and put that piling at three foot, so you would lose seven foot eight off the deck, and then have an 18-inch cantilever. So you gain 18, one and a half feet into the, into the 7.8, so what you're encroaching...
I think the deck surface matters more than where the piling is. I mean, if...
I agree, 100%.
Because that deck surface will still encroach more.
I agree.
That's where the measurement would be.
I also agree that there's no, to me, it's not like this is on the corner and it's preventing somebody coming off of Raleigh Street being able to see or have any, any danger of being able to, you know, what was the technical term for public safety, or something like that?
Site triangle.
Well, inside the ordinance write-up. So, you know, for me, the ordinance, you know, states we're allowed to have three-foot uncovered encroachment into the setback. And here, prior to, they had a 10.8-foot encroachment. If we reduce that to four foot six, that cuts what they're proposing a little bit less than a half, and provides them with a nine-foot eight, nine-foot 10 deck. Still not eight foot, but not 16 either. What's on the ground meets the ordinance. And I would propose that the stairs would have to meet the ordinance, or a secondary follow-up to a variance. So either they're three foot within the setback, you know, encroaching only three foot, or they're not encroaching at all.
My only, my question is, without a variance, I don't think the stairs...
I agree.
They would need something...
They're going to be, have to be recessed into the three-foot setback.
Unless they get a variance.
Unless they get a variance.
And they won't be able to put them in there. I'm open for suggestions on how we proceed at this point. If we're stuck in a rut, and we're not making any progress, everybody has different opinions.
Actually, Kenny, they might be able to get them in there. Because they're going to be left with five foot, four plus a three-foot encroachment. That's eight foot. They would be able to do a turnback if they could make the grade work.
Yeah, we don't know, we don't have those measurements. And I don't want to put them off another month or two trying to get that simple measurement. I'm willing to say, okay, he can encroach a certain amount of feet with stairs, but not the deck. That's what I'm proposing.
I think he brought up that he could make the stairs work and fit inside the setback. Didn't you say that? Because you said something about you could even turn them and have them go back under.
I'm saying that if he would do them back like they were.
When we were talking about the 20 by 16, I said I could make the stairs work as they were. I would put it back in the exact same footprint. I can, I understand the cantilever, and we've actually talked about that. That would require basically an architect to come in and make sure everything, the structure will sell, and how far it can overhang over the columns. Because I believe you got about three-foot overhang encroachment?
The three foot is just inside the current setback, and you're...
Would the three-foot overhang be included with the three foot that you would allow for the column?
A cantilever and the encroachment are two different...
Right. The column would be set at the three-foot line inside the setback. And then the rimboard or your outer band would be 18 inches beyond your drop girder. And building code allows for one-third, I think it's one-third, your cantilever to your floor joist distance by prescription.
I feel like the stairs would have to have some type of support, which would require a bolt of some sort, or brace.
Stairs might end up having to shrink the 20-foot width side. Your stairs might have to come into the deck on, instead of being 20 foot, you might have to be 17 or 15. Or encroach on your driveway.
And maybe, I mean, they set options for sure, but the length of that run looks like to me with existing, that's a pretty long...
If you're eight foot off existing grade, you would have 14 steps to be able to get down, so 14 is 133.
If he puts the stairs... Greg, can you put the site plan back up, so I can point and everybody sees what I'm talking about?
No matter what distance we go around the house, it looks to me like, since this is mine six, over we have 6.4 feet inside the setback, which would easily allow him to put a set of stairs that came down and turned back around inside the setback, or inside the setback, but only going over...
Plus the three feet.
So I don't think the stairs would be an issue.
Yep. If they were, you could always take the 20-foot and shrink it to 19 or 18 to be able to not encroach the driveway. Yep. Yeah, you could go from a 19 to a 20 to 19.
Does that help anybody's thoughts on...
I definitely think you can get them in there.
Yeah. So I don't think getting the stairs in there, it's, he could put the stairs in and not have to go for a variance, from what I see.
With an eight-foot deck?
With any size deck.
Well, he needs a variance if he's going to be over eight foot.
For the deck, but not for the stairs.
For the deck.
That's what we're saying, so we don't need to worry about the stairs.
That's what I'm saying, we don't need to worry about the stairs. We just need to talk about the deck, and what we allow.
Now you're back to my idea, no variance on the deck.
And that's where I proposed, what if we did, and where Ethan's also proposing a little bit. He's given another foot and a half, I guess, or something to it. And I'm proposing to allow a 12-foot deck, so that he can use the space close to how he originally bought the property to use it. That's why I'm proposing a 12-foot. Ethan's proposing, would you say 9.6?
Yeah, 9.6.
9.6.
There are tons. We have tons, tons.
I've been building decks in this town for more than 30 years, and it's common. Very common.
We have the same problem with a lot of the lots with trailers, the mobile homes. They pulled a mobile home off, they can't put a mobile home back, because it doesn't fit. It's just unique, because of times things change, laws change. That's not the issue here.
There's a lot of homes that have a single story that's elevated, and the only way to get to that is via a deck. There are tons of these houses on this island. There are a lot.
Because lots were built, and then they come back and did a permit and built it down, closed it downstairs because their family grew. Because lots were built and then they come back and did a permit and built it down, closed it downstairs because their family grew. That's what a lot of the cases were.
We don't hear.
That's why there was no stairs put between the two floors.
We don't get a lot of variance requests, but that issue exists all throughout town.
And that's where we're, this isn't, in the variant, in the, uh, in the ordinance, it states that the problem has to be peculiar to the property. It's not. This is an intermodal wide thing that there's decks that encroach upon the setbacks everywhere. You know, any home, any home that was built probably before the nineties, uh, probably has some type of non-conformity. And it's dangerous territory to start allowing variances. When there is ample access otherwise, yes, I agree. The deck can't be used if, you know, we don't give an, give a variance. But if we set a precedent that Johnny can go out and take a picture of his dilapidated deck and accidentally tear it down and then apply for a permit and he will get a variance to build back maybe half of what he has, that sets a scary precedent. And I'm not saying that's what you guys did, but there are other people that will follow this case and see that, oh, they let them do what they wanted to, I'm gonna go in here and tear this down because I know it's not gonna meet ordinance, it's not gonna be permissible.
And I know people see houses of your size, there's lots of homes of that size on Ocean Drive, Ocean Front that were non-compliant. Well, people come in with enough money, they tear that house down and move it within the setbacks and get a three, four-story house out of it. I mean, it's, it's possible. I mean, if you look at your site plan, you have a ton of property in the back. I mean, I'm not saying you could do this, but if you could tear your house down and move it back twenty feet, you could build a huge house. I mean, I'm, I'm just pointing out the facts and that's what people are doing now. But like to, and to, to Ethan's, uh, there is a ton, a ton. We don't see a lot of variance cases, uh, I think this is probably the. Number one for this situation, but we've had, um, in the five years or so that I've been on the board, I think three variance cases now. We don't see a ton of variance cases because people are usually able to maneuver within, um. Right, and it shows on the, on the plan.
It's probably closer to anyone else on the home, uh, in the block area.
Mr. Chair, I do need to point out a clarification. I'm not trying to be argumentative on there, but the statement was made that that is the only access to the upper level, which is incorrect. We already covered earlier tonight that there is access to the second story in the back of the property. So I, I just, that has to be clarified when you guys are reviewing this. It is not the only access to the upstairs. It's the primary and it's been, that term has been used multiple times tonight, but it is not the only access to the second story.
I would like to share on that aspect, the driveway, the big driveway for entrance to the upstairs that is historically been used. That does pose quite a hardship when you're trying to get groceries or suitcases and it's raining outside, which I know you can't control the weather, but having to walk completely around the house and then up a set of stairs, um, to get in your residence, uh, you, you eliminate the ability to be able to use the driveway i- if you can't access from the front.
Sure, but we're saying you can definitely access through the front, through the ordinance. The ordinance one-hundred percent allows that to be constructed.
And you don't need a variance to build access to the entrance. That's already been determined because you've got eight, basically eight feet to deal with. In order to make it usable for an entrance, you don't need a variance. We're not stopping you from using it and we're not saying that we're not gonna do anything because you have another entrance. You can use it. You've got eight-point-two feet without us doing anything.
Then again, he's not able to use it the way.
But he's able to use it.
He wasn't, he's not able to use it the way it was originally intended to be used.
I understand what you're trying.
And again, I was not trying to be argumentative, I'm not trying to go on another tangent. It was just stated that without this, there is no access to the upper level, which is incorrect. And that's all I was correcting.
I understand that, thank you.
Mr. Steeber, would you mind, who stated that, that that was the only?
Your, your attorney did, she just did.
No, I said that you can't get in from the inside, because there's no access.
Sorry, I didn't recall what you were saying.
No, ma'am, I heard it as well, that you said that that was only access was through the front. I, I heard that as well.
I just, I intended to say that there's no access in, in, inside.
It's only access to the front of the house is through that, that door. There's also access in the back of the house. So maybe you got confused in translation and discussion. But, I mean, I, I understand it, so thank you for clarifying that. Now with that said, we haven't got very far.
So would the board consider doing a twelve-foot deck? So you're no and Kenny, you're no?
I'd have to hear the whole thing.
What do you mean?
Okay, hear the whole discussion. I mean, it's, why?
So that.
Having twelve, that's better than eight.
Because he could then basically use the deck similar to how he originally bought the property and used it to have more than just a few chairs sitting out there. He could actually have a dinner out there, whatever, which is the way he, uh, which is the way he used the property before and the way he, and I would imagine, intended to use the property when he bought it. Whereas an eight-foot deck would not allow him to do that. And that's why I'm suggesting, okay, with twelve-foot. Because twelve-foot, he could, wouldn't be quite as nice, but he could do the same thing.
You don't have to commence all of this.
I had to commence four.
Yeah.
So I'm asking you. Ethan said no. So I'm asking you guys, and I'm gonna ask her.
I'm not saying no, um, just, just not, it's not, it's not what you asked for. It's not what's on the paperwork before us. I know we can put conditions on, we can change it.
Well, he did say that he would consider something.
So, Mr. Chair, the applicant has the ability to amend his application if he sees fit. He can verbally express that to you. Uh, actually, he's, he said he's willing to consider it. He would have to verbally say, I'm amending my application for X. But he does have that opportunity.
Do you wish to amend your application?
Yes, sir. I wish to amend my application to request a twelve-foot deck instead of sixteen and I would put the stairs in the same configuration so that it does not encroach on any more of the M O I setback.
So you'd be asking for a total of a four-foot variance. Am I doing the math right, Chris?
So sixteen-foot would have eleven-foot variance?
Ten, ten-point-eight.
But, yeah, it's just rounding it up to eleven foot. You just, if you go twelve, you just take four off of it. So it'd be, uh. Well, I mean, a- again, a three-foot is just if there's no other encroachment, that allows that much encroachment. What we're considering is, the literal interpretation is the setbacks. So if, the, the whole permissible three-foot encroachment does not discount the variance.
It's the average, Mr. Chair, it's an average of ten-foot one, uh, due to the angle that it resides. So ultimately, if you do ten-one, we sort the deck by four feet. I'm asking for six-foot one. Average, that's through the center of the deck, by feet of right, feet of left.
The world measures the difference. My math shows me that without any variance, you can build an eight-foot deck. So if we went to twelve, I mean, four-foot, um, variance, you could add four foot to that eight-foot deck. You can build now, so that may be a total of twelve feet. Are you following that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, right now.
It's all the math.
Greg, can you put the site plan up again?
Your, your house is five, at the shorter side of your, um, on the.
The maximum encroachment will be six-point-eight feet.
On the east side, five point eight.
Can you just draw a picture for us?
If he did a twelve-foot deck, it'd be six-point-eight feet encroached.
Maximum.
Maximum. No, could you get the three feet?
We got eight feet, eight feet.
He's got ten-point-eight feet encroaching right there. If he reduces his deck by four feet, you take the ten-point-eight minus four, that gets six-point-eight. That's the encroachment, the maximum.
This, this is not showing the, um.
The stairs would be recessed into, yeah, the three, and, and Chris already said the three foot doesn't matter. We're, the literal interpretation is off of the actual setback line. The three foot is just a allowance.
You can encroach by three foot.
Yeah, but we don't talk about that when we talk about variance.
But if we gave him ten foot, he'd go thirteen foot.
No.
No.
No, you can't add to it.
Can't add to that because it's not, you're, you're changing.
The variance is a hard number. If, if you give him a variance for twelve-foot deck, you're giving him a variance for six-point-eight feet into the setback.
Twelve-foot deck, I was saying that we would.
It couldn't go another three feet.
Right.
Yep.
Right now, he, right now, with the encroachment, he can do eight, eight foot.
Correct, plus four.
Twelve would add a three, that would be in essence a fifteen, correct?
Right, no, because it, right, right.
Right, right, so I mean, if you're asking for twelve overall, twelve foot from the house out.
Yeah, that would be a maximum.
That would include the three foot that you guys allow.
Yes.
Uh, so six, eight minus three, we're asking for three foot eight, is that accurate?
It would be.
They're asking for six foot eight.
The variance. Okay, hold on, hold on. The variance will be from the setback line. It does not, yes, the code allows three foot of encroachment. That's it. If you guys are considering say a twelve-foot deck versus a sixteen-foot deck, the variance request, if we go straight, no rounding or anything else, would be a six-point-eight foot variance.
Yes.
Follow that.
Hey.
The three foot is gone when you're asking for a variance.
If you go more than three feet, it's off the table, you don't get the three feet.
If we word it in the deck, we go white note.
We just worded, he cannot go.
We're basically, we're basically telling him he can go six-point-two over the setback, not three, is what we would be telling him. So there wouldn't be a three on top of that.
Six-point-eight.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
If you're taking a sixteen and reducing it to twelve.
Right.
It would be, you would be considering a variance of six-point-eight feet.
Instead of the three foot.
Well, no, instead of what's petitioned right now for a sixteen-foot deck.
No, what I was.
It would be, hold on, let me finish, okay? It would be a ten-point-eight foot variance. If what he's proposed, what you guys are talking about is reducing that sixteen-foot to twelve. So it's just a simple math, you take four feet off that variance request. Disregard the three-foot encroachment.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying instead of looking at the three-foot encroachment, it would be, it's almost like it's a six-foot encroachment we're allowed for that particular thing.
Something to, yeah, it would be.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, it all depends on how you throw in those numbers and which order. And it's gotta be written up, if we have through that in a way that's.
You, you guys, if, if that is what the board is hearing towards, you have to go through those four items and vote on them independently based off of your decision.
Okay. I can make the motion in this case.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion. We allow Mr. Quick a variance to build a maximum of a twelve-foot deck, twelve-foot wide deck to approach the setback by approximately six feet.
Six-point-eight.
Six-point-eight.
Six-point-eight feet. But the deck could be no wider towards, can't be no more than twelve feet from the house towards the street. So that doesn't get confused in.
So you're voting on the amount of variance that you want the Board of Adjustment to consider? So all that extra stuff is not, if, if you want a twelve-foot deck, you would make a motion for a six-point-eight foot variance.
Okay, I make a motion, we allow Mr. Quick six-point-eight foot variance on the front of your setback.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, um, I've gotta go to four issues and I'm gonna ask everybody if they agree or disagree. Unnecessary hardship will result from the strict application of the regulation. Not necessary to demonstrate that in the absence of variance, no reasonable use of the property can be made, can be made of the property. Andrew, do you agree with that?
I agree.
No?
Yeah.
Five?
Yes.
Ethan?
No.
Nope?
No.
I, I agree, so that's four. Second, the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property such as location size or topography. Hardships resulting from personal circumstances as well as hardships resulting from conditions that are common to the neighborhood or general public may not be the basis for granting variance. Do you agree?
Yes.
No.
I agree, that's four. Two down, two to go. The hardship did not result from acts taken by the applicant or the property owner. The act of purchasing property with knowledge that circumstances exist that may justify the granting of a variance is not a self-created hardship.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I disagree.
All right, the last one. The requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulation such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved.
I agree. It's great.
You agree?
I agree.
Hey. We never get to, you only go with the first four again, or you're pretty sure about your notes?
I'm good on that.
Okay, that. All four conditions have been met, that means the motion has passed. Am I correct, Chris?
Yes, you have answered. The, the board has answered with a four-fifth vote of, uh, three out of four and a five-zero vote for the fourth one. So if that is, if that is the decision of the board, it is, uh, you have approved the variance request.
Okay, a six-point-eight foot variance request has been granted. Sorry, I took so long. We tend to be thorough and confused. All right, with that said, is there any other?
No, sir, no other items.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I second.
Is this in the spirit? Aye. We have a motion to adjourn, you two have, I'm second. All those people say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Five, no, can you believe that? Thank you.